Call this meeting in order of the Cholo City Council. Show that all council members are present except Councilman Alsop. He has been excused. I've asked the Vice Mayor to lead us in vocation. And Councilwoman Wilson to lead us in pledge if you'd all like to join. Stand and join us, please.
Our gracious eternal father. We're thankful this night to come before thee. As a city council and as a community. We express our gratitude for our many blessings. We're thankful for this community and our citizens. Our employees and our first responders and our military. We ask thy blessing upon them. That they may be safe. In serving their community. Please bless us as we deliberate tonight on the issues on the agenda that we will do so with respect and dignity. Please grace us with moisture for land and bless us all. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Thank you all for attending. We don't have any controversy, but it's nice to see you here. Thanks for everybody watching on channel 58. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is call to the public. Any citizen desire to speak on a matter that is with the jurisdiction of the city of council may do so at this time. Nobody moving. We'll move along to special events. Presentation by the Cholo Chamber of Commerce, Tricia. I didn't write your name down, but I kind of figured I remembered who you are.
Hope so. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Council members, city staff, thank you for giving me this time to tell you what the chamber is doing. We've got some exciting things going on, so I'm excited to talk to you about it. So first we got get through the boring stuff, but important. So you guys all have the 2019 audit that we conducted by your bylaws and your guys' requirements too. So it all came out great and we had a presentation at our last board meeting. Everything came out perfect. You can go through that if you'd like. We have the 2020 scheduled as well. That's going to be conducted in July. So you'll have that as soon as that's all done. And then the budget versus actual, we're looking really, really good. We're above budget right now. So our finance and budget committee is doing a fantastic job on keeping us on track on that. So as you can see, we're running in the red there or in the black, not the red. In the black. So it's looking really good. So the monthly visitor counts for the first quarter is 363. You'll see all the different visitor count by age and our monthly website statistics. You can see that we are doing really good there. Every month shows an increase of users sessions. If you look at the organic search, now I'm not a professional at all on how that all works. So, but it looks really good. So we're at 91% in January, 91 in February, 89 in March. And so total we're at 90% organic search. We expect that to go up with some of the stuff that we're planning on doing. One of the things that we're looking at doing is a photo contest for our new sign on the tourist or the chamber building. It needs to be redone. So we're actually looking at doing a photo contest going up to the public and through our, through Facebook and our social media and doing that. We have a few businesses that are donating. A lot of prizes. So it's going to be really cool. So when you guys, that's going to be coming out hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Social medias were January for the post reach in Facebook was 9,000, February was 11,000, March was 27. So we're going up a lot with our post reach and engagements there. Pinterest is doing amazing. Courtney, our gal in the chamber there, she's doing a fantastic job with all the posts and putting everything on there. Twitter, I don't do Twitter, so I'm not really sure how this works, but we're keeping pretty good on that as well. Her information requests for relocation vacation inquiries, we did a total of 16 out of there over the quarter. This also gives just a breakdown of local in-state, out-of-state, you know, gives you the numbers there. And then it kind of gives you a 2021 versus 2020. And so it's, everything is right on track to where we need it to be. Let's see. Okay. And that gives you the local in-state and out-of-state graph there versus the 2020. So as of right now, we're, we're up quite a bit from 2020. So everything's looking good. One exciting thing, we're finally officially part of the Arizona Office of Tourism. I talked to our contact there yesterday. We got our page up and going. We're waiting for our welcome kit, which has our portal that we can get into. That we can start building up our page. So the benefits of the AOT is we are added to the visit Arizona.com, which has 2.8 visits annually. And then we're added to the official state travel guide, which 400,000 go out every year. And then the access to the new partner portal, which is really cool. We get to build our City of Cholo page. And then we can also submit different business listings that they actually take in consideration if we can put it on there. To be added to the visit Arizona. We can list deals and promotions. Create consumer events. So any events that the City of Cholo is doing, we can actually put on there as well. And then we, when we create the page, we can link it to our website and as well. So everything goes. Once people click on that, want more information, it'll go to the Cholo Chamber website. So it's a really big benefit and what they offer. And so we're going to be working in the next couple of weeks on getting that page up and going. Once we get our welcome kit. We also are partnering with them on the Appreciate Arizona. It is a, we'll get some posters from them as well as brochures. Gives kind of a, like a plan ahead and prepare, stick to the trails, trash your trash. Kind of just an education for our visitors when they come here on how to act respectfully in our, our nature and all that. Me being big in the whole campground scene, it's, it was quite challenged last year with the new campers that were coming up and uneducated. Lot of trash, a lot of resource damage. So I think this is going to be a great thing that we can actually do to promote, to help that. So this next one, I'm going to introduce Gary Tackett. He's our new board member. And also it came from us from Payson Roundup. He works for them, White Mountain Independent. And we just partnered with them on something that's going to be really cool. So I'll let him talk about that real quick.
Thanks, Tricia. As Tricia said, I'm Gary Tackett. I look forward to meeting each one of you individually. I've been in Payson for the last five years. My wife and I have a home there. We love hiking. We have elk in our backyard. So we love the forest and we love this area. We would come up here to go hiking even before we moved here. And when Brian Kramer with the Kramer family asked me if I would consider coming up to Cholo. I said, yeah, you know, my wife and I love it up there. So I've been up here for about a month. Okay. I was on the Chamber of Commerce in Payson for five years, president, vice president. I was on the Humane Society Board. And I was on the Continental Bridge Board. We had a cool event called the Taste of the Bridge where we had wine and live band and things like that. And we worked with the chamber on that and netted a lot of money for the chamber as well. So when I approached the chamber about, you know, joining, I kidded Trish and Rob that, you know, I was looking to join, but I was also looking to partner with something. So what we did was, this is something that we did in Payson. It's called Discover Rim Country. And this is a magazine that's all color glossy. It's about 80 pages. And what it did was tell all the highlights of Payson, you know, why do you want to visit Payson? Why do you want to live here? The Realtors, of course, all loved it. They would take it out with prospect packages and send it out to people. We put it in the visitor center. We put it at the casino. We put it at restaurants, hotels, hospitality areas. We mailed it. Go all 65 area statewide Chamber of Commerces in the state. To let them know Payson's here and we want people coming here. And so we hope to do the same thing in Cholo. It's a partnership with the chamber so that it costs the chamber nothing. Okay. We have five salespeople that will be out on the street, of course, selling advertising on it. Our editor Jim and Laura, who is taking the pictures and three or four other reporters will be doing stories on things in Cholo to see. We're providing the chamber over 3,000 copies of it for free. So I think it's going to be a great partnership. We're looking forward to it. And it's just one of the things that, you know, we're doing at the White Mountain Independent. This next month, we're doing a hiking guide as well. We're doing the, you've seen in the paper, we're doing the best of the white mountains. So people can vote on the best hamburger, doctor, dentist, whatever. It's all free. And we take care of that. So we're excited about this program. All the members will be listed in there for the Chamber of Commerce as well. So we're excited to be serving our members. Oftentimes with chambers, one of the big questions of members is, why am I paying for this? You know, why am I in the chamber? So we're hoping to do a better job. I'm sure they're doing a great job, but we're hoping to do a good job of getting to the members and letting them know that this is one of the things we're going to do. We're going to be advertising their companies throughout the state of Arizona. And have these magazines virtually everywhere. Any questions? Have to wait till the end? Okay, sorry. Oh, it kind of, I should mention, it kind of, kind of replaces this. This was a showcase directory and it's pretty. My only criticism of it is that it's, it's a little bit like a phone book. It just has all the members in it, you know, and there's not too much reason for a newcomer tourist visitor to pick this up unless they want to memorize the Chamber of Commerce directory. So this will have the directory in it, but I think more importantly, it will have a lot of reasons why people want Cholo.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah. So I think that's going to be a great partnership and we actually get a percentage as well. The chamber will too, from those sales, from the advertisers. So, so yeah, so we're excited about that. We can't wait for that to get going. So that was kind of the TIC, to give you guys a quick rundown on what we're doing with the, the member updates. This is our first quarter. I'm planning on this going up on with some of the ideas that we're going to be implementing here soon. We pretty much had three members every month join in. So we're sitting at 207 members right now. I have some high goals to make that bigger, but I'm like, with the board and partnerships that we're getting, I think it's going to be easily attained. So.
And not to interrupt, but our sales force out in Cholo is going to be talking to non-members. And offering them membership in the chamber along with an ad in the magazine. So our goal is to get members as well. Sorry.
No, thank you.
When you renew those members, don't send them a bill. Go visit them. Telling you from experience, because I put a bill in my mail, I'll never send it back. Will you come visit at me?
Understood.
You're jumping my thing here.
Where'd you get that idea?
So what we're doing is we started up the ribbon cuttings again. They've been very popular. We're about 10 right now. I think we have one and I haven't told you yet, but we are going to be doing the April 17th one for the Adams Cabin. So we will be doing that. So we, Courtney's doing a really good job reaching out to our members and getting those scheduled. We're kind of backlog with COVID and everything that we're trying to get those up to date. So we do them the first Tuesday and the last Thursday of every month is when we plan them. We're planning a safe return back to networking events. Our breakfasts, our after hours, all the ones that we used to do before COVID. And so we're bringing all those back. We're just, we have committees set up to try to figure out the safest way and the best way to do that. We're building partner relations. I'm, we've built a partnership with the SBDC. We're going to be working closely with them on education stuff. I had a great conversation with Rich Chenick. I think is how you say his last name. And we're, I'm excited for the stuff that's going to come out with him. He got me in touch with the Northeastern Arizona Business Response Team as well as the MPC Career Manager. And some of the things, as I'm going out and talking to the members, biggest thing that they're having issues with right now is the workforce. So I'm kind of working on that. It's not the actual business. The business is there. It's just finding the employees. So we're kind of tackling that right now for our members. We joined the Western Association of Chamber Executives, which gives us a portal of amazing information that we can use to help our members. We are sponsoring Derby Down the Deuce. And we're excited about that. It's going to be July 10th. And Mike Bosley is the one that's heading that up. I called him on the way in and he let me know that Jay Brimhall did a grant and was able to get Derby Down the Deuce $1,000. So thank you for, Jay, for doing that. That every little bit helps. So. Like I mentioned before, we're establishing board committees. That is going to be specific to certain things that are happening with our members. And then I'm scheduling presentations on chamber goals. I have one on Thursday with the BNG Group. People are curious on what the chamber is doing. And so I'm going out there and explaining it to them. And people are really responding to that. So. What we're planning, we are actually partnering with the City of Cholo to come up with an ambassador program. I'm working with Steve North. He is a wealth of knowledge. He's actually built the whole thing. He's going to be chairing the program. So it's going to be coming here real soon. I can't wait for that because we'll have the volunteers out there on the ground, talking with people, members and helping with events and that sort of thing. So. We were planning on adding more value. We're going to be looking at our website, redoing that, adding more education on their webinars. You know, stuff like that, networking opportunities, better communication with the members. We're going to be going out with surveys, e-blast. Business visits hitting the ground doing that. So. And then building a new member orientation. So when the members do come on, they can be taught exactly what a chamber does. It's not just to take, they have to give just as much as well. And so it's a kind of a, a business partnership. So it's kind of more giving them that orientation. So that's what we're planning right now. That's kind of went a little longer than one I wanted to, because he told me five minutes, but.
I told you three. You said you wanted five. I gave you almost 20.
So if you have any questions.
Comment more than anything. I'm excited. You know how I've been about the chamber over the years. I'm excited the direction for sure. Welcome aboard. That, that looks pretty cool. As a past member of the chamber. It's not, you're right. It gives you something to, a reason to join. You know, just that in itself. I mean, 3,000 just to the chamber. So how many of those are you planning on publishing?
We'll probably do like 15,000 to 18,000. We're also doing digital impressions for all 200 members. So they're going to be on the largest website in town, which is ours, WMI Central dot com. So they'll be getting digital impressions as well, which also help their business.
Exciting. Any other comments?
Just a comment of congratulations on the AOT. I know that's been a goal for many years and we appreciate your efforts and the, the board's efforts to get that in place.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited.
I wanted to say welcome onboard and Trish, thank you for the work that you're doing there. That magazine that you want to bring up, are you guys going to like pick different businesses and showcase them?
It'll probably be more about places, you know, like parks and hikes and lakes and things like that. Okay. There could be some business profiles in there. Okay. You know, when you have 200 members, it might be tough unless we have a drawing who we're going to go with, you know. But the, the idea is to have rich, vibrant content that visitors want to read, right? And that's why they'll pick it up, right? And it's going to be, you know, this is, for example, 30 pages. Okay. The magazine I'm giving to you is 80 pages. Okay. Most people, when they go to pick up something, they kind of look at it, look at that. It's not much there, you know, so. But we can look at business profiles too. You know, it's not a problem with us certainly. And the more content we have in there, we think the better, you know.
And I know that the chamber are used to, and I don't know if they still are, do the community service. Are they still doing that?
I, not since I've been on, but that's a good thing to bring up. I've kind of been thinking a little bit on certain things that we can do. I'm, I'm a big hiker. And so I've noticed there's like a lot of trash out there right now. And so I've kind of been thinking about that, maybe starting like a community service, trash pickup.
We'll tell you that the paper absolutely wants doing that. And we met with Dean at the Humane Society the other day. And I have an appointment 10 o'clock Thursday morning with RJ at the Pet Allies. So we're, we're trying to figure out a way to how to help with adoptions. I was on the Humane Society Board and my wife and I have a couple of rescue cats. So we're kind of fond of animals and everybody up here is too. So makes sense to you.
And I only had one last question. Was that a wine tasting?
Yes. Yeah. So if I can, just briefly, I don't want to take up more time than there, but it wasn't cheap. Okay. We charged $50 a ticket. Okay.
For wine?
For wine tasting and for, and for a barbecue. It's going to get better, honestly. Barbecue dinner as well. Okay. We also hit up businesses around town for donations. We did a blind auction. Okay. We had foursomes of golf courses and necklaces. And so we raised 15,000 to 18,000. That's net after expenses, you know.
He's on my events committee too.
Rob, I think we found somebody that out talked to you on the report.
It wasn't my intent, but thank you for the time.
Tricia, thank you very much, Gary. It's nice meeting you. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it.
Welcome to Cholo again.
Alrighty, next item on the agenda, agenda, agenda is presentation of wildlife preparedness. Katrina Jenkins, Navajo County Emergency Manager. I believe Chief Shelley is coming this way. Welcome.
Thank you. Who knew I'd have an entourage?
Yeah, no kidding.
Take the right night, Katrina.
Oh, I got, I got my backup dancers here. So thank you for having me, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again so soon. As you all know, our biggest threat up here is wildfire. So we wanted to talk to you a little bit about how we do our restrictions and how we do things a little bit different in the Northeast Arizona corner. So it's a group effort. I couldn't do it without the partners. And we have a lot of them. Two of them are behind me and one back there in the back row ignoring me. It's fine. Chief Swan. Yeah, I'm calling you out. He's all right. He's a good partner to have. As you can see, we have Forest Service, State Forestry, BLM, BIA. The two counties, we have our representative from the NAPA group, the Northern, Northeastern Arizona Police Association. And our NACA representative, which is our Northeastern Arizona Fire Chiefs Association. All of us come together on a regular basis during fire season and even off fire season. To discuss our operations, how we're going to coordinate with each other and make sure that we stay in touch with our program. Every year, our decisions are based on data. The group receives data from our National Weather Service partners. As well as reports from Forest Service and State Forestry on the conditions, the energy release component numbers. What they're seeing, how fire behavior is acting, because we will have fire. It's part of living in the wildland urban interfaces. Part of what we do, but we do want to do it smart. Then we also have our regional partners in the tribal communities, other counties and so forth, as well as the state. So we do gather all this data and we have a form that we created and it will be documenting every week when we talk. How that data looks and whether or not to go into restrictions. We do host a preseason and postseason meeting. And actually our preseason meeting is coming up this coming Monday, the 12th. Which all of the partners come together and this year it will be virtual again. Due to COVID. So we can be smart and we can be respectful. Then hopefully by the end of the season, we'll be able to come together and go over our after actions. Make sure that we didn't have any major issues and we can discuss them if there are. Finally, after we meet, we'll get together and present a report to the group and go from there. We also share those reports on a weekly basis through our notes. Partners can call in for that update in person or I email out notes on a weekly basis. And I guess that's pretty much it unless you have any questions. I wanted to keep it short.
You did. Any comments? None of the chiefs are going to speak, really?
Ken, if you'd like.
No, that's, no.
No, you know. See, I knew. Mayor and City Council, you know, she's selling herself short. So Katrina is the fireplug for this whole thing to get this thing moving. No pun intended. Okay. Regarding this for fire season, because the coordination efforts between Apache, Navajo County. All the different groups that are involved there. There's a PIO group and all these different people that are involved in these meetings. There's a, there's three different meetings that go on every single week during fire season. The first one is the group. We get together, we look at all the science, we look at all our recommendations. And the PIO group meets. And then the third group is an open meeting where city officials, county officials, reservation people, everybody meets together on that. Comes online and listens to all the information and what the recommendations are. So it's not just a short meeting and we're done with it. There's a lot of information that's shared every single time. So. Kudos to Katrina for really pushing this. Jim for being the representative out of the fireside, doing a great job on all this stuff. But we take a lot of stuff into consideration. So I just want to let you know about that.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, this, you heard earlier from your chamber folks about visitors coming to the White Mountains. That's the other consistent part of this is the messaging that we're trying to convey, not only to our community members, but those visitors that are coming up here. And maintaining a consistent message, both in Apache and Navajo counties and our local communities. We have found over the years that that consistent messaging has been extremely important and getting our visitors to comply. Not always an easy task when we're seeing the Valleyites besiege our local beautiful areas. So it's important messaging for us. In fact, in 2017 was probably the most key factor that we identified. In one of the driest seasons that we saw since we were keeping data. And we actually had no fires as a result of the restrictions that we put in place. So the system works and the key component of that is the partners and collaboration that occurs in those meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Thank you guys very much. Hopefully we have a minimal fire season, but we need some moisture, that's for sure.
We definitely need the moisture. Unfortunately, we've already seen a couple of abandoned campfires. So it is important that we all keep getting that message out there. So, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda. Promotion of Officer Richard Rosales to Police Sergeant. Chief Shelley, I said that wrong?
No, you, that's close.
I didn't put the hood on there.
That's Rosales.
See, I told you.
He comes up here. Yeah. Well, while they're walking up, Mayor and City Council, Richard Rosales has been with the resident of the White Mountains for 20 years. He's graduated the Blue Ridge High School and loves sports, especially softball. Guy's got a gun. In high school, excelled at baseball and received the Justin Flores Memorial Scholarship. Also, while in high school, he joined the Pine Top Lakeside Police Explorer Program and served there for four years. And as an explorer, he showed he was driven and dedicated individual. He worked with several of our officers over that four-year period and built a good rapport with all of us. When he finally turned 21, which he's like 23 now, he applied with the Cholo Police Department and it was an easy decision to hire. In August 2012, we call him Richie or Richard. Richie was hired by our agency. In the patrol ranks, he quickly showed a passion for the profession. He seemed very, it seemed, it seemed too easy for him to find criminal activity. He's always into it. I mean, no matter what, just goes down the road, he falls right into, especially the possession and transportation of drugs. That's where he's really excelled. His work ethic has seldom rivaled him in the patrol division in 2013. We moved him, excuse me, he was voted as Officer of the Year. We moved him, excuse me, he was voted as Officer of the Year in 2013. As a young officer in 2015, with only two and a half years of experience, he tested for the position of the Git'em Squad, which is the DPS Squad, as a detective. We selected him and is quickly recognized by the statewide for his hard work and ethic and passion for the position. And he was recognized twice as the Gang Detective of the Year by Arizona DPS in 2017 and 2019. So whenever Richie, Richie sets his mind to a task, he'll accomplish it. Whether it's broken or not, doesn't matter. He will accomplish it, I guarantee it. So he became a member of the White Mountain Regional SRT Team three years ago and also instructs organized crime to new recruits at our Regional Academy. Sholo Police Department is proud of Richie Rosales and congratulates him. Sorry, I get choked up when I'm going to promote Richie to Patrol Sergeant. So we're going to promote him to the rank of Sergeant. So congratulations. I'm sure he has someone that would like to come up here and pin this on him, because we would like to have a shot at it, but we know that there's someone else. Yes, you can choose one.
Choose both of them?
You can choose both.
And who's with you?
You going to introduce this? Oh, come here. You got to introduce people.
This is my fiancee, Christian, and my mom, Angela.
So before you get that, this is what happened. Thank you. And I get.
Well, you gave it, Tom. Now you're taking it back.
Probably going to take both of you.
Want to say a few words, Richie?
No, I think.
No.
Mayor, can I say something?
You're really not going to talk? He didn't want? I know.
It's kind of odd. So, you want me to talk?
You want Brian? Brian said he'll talk for you, but I don't want him to, so.
Make him talk. Mayor, so Officer Rosales, I remember when he was brand new, just young officer and stuff, always very polite and very good at his job. And, and so it's nice to see you getting promoted, you know, congratulations. You know, you're a good officer.
He's worked hard.
Yeah.
Well, I am very excited to actually be back assigned to the Patrol Division. Being gone for five years puts me back home a lot more, puts my focus in different areas. I'm excited and thrilled to be promoted, and I'm ready for the challenge. Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you, guys, again, for everything you do for us. Appreciate it. Thank you. All righty, next item on the agenda is Introduction of Communications Manager, Grace Payne. Morgan.
Mayor and Council, we're excited to be here tonight to introduce you to Grace Payne. She's our new communications manager. She's a graduate from Arizona State University, so I'm.
A plus.
Very proud of that. Fellow Sun Devil up here. Grace was recently the, helping with the Heber Overguard Chamber of Commerce. And before that, she was with the Town of Fountain Hills, doing communications for them. And we're just glad to have her on board. She's going to be helping with a lot of the PIO stuff, press releases, social media, communications, you name it, what we're going to do. So I'll turn it over to her if she wants to say anything, but we're glad to have her on board.
Oh, good evening, and thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I just want to express my gratitude to you. Today marks one full week that I have been here, and every day has felt so far like an absolute pleasure. And a very special thanks to our city manager for extending me this opportunity. And I really look forward to serving the great city of Sholo. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I know, I'm, we're pretty excited to have you here, that's for sure. You know, we threw our barbecue event on you today at a meeting, but I was, I was sitting at home Monday, and I thought, or Sunday night, and I thought, you know what? We need Grace at this meeting, because this is a good place for her to start, so welcome. Looking forward to working with you for sure. Very excited.
Thank you very much. Well, for our first meeting, it was an excellent topic. Barbecue.
Barbecue, right. Can't go wrong. We can't shake hands.
We will respectfully social distance.
Not yet. Thank you, Grace. Welcome. Appreciate it. Thank you, Morgan.
Nice to meet you.
All righty, next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar. Is there any items that need to be talked about or removed? Items on the consent calendar, was there anything? Just before I read them. I'll, I'll come back to the other ones. Proclamation by the Mayor proclaiming April 21st, 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Proclamation by Mayor proclaiming April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Sholo. Bear with me here, I got to change pages. We have a lot. Proclamation by the Mayor proclaiming April 30th, 2020 as Arbor Day. Proclamation proclaiming April 11th through the 17th as Public Safety Communication Week. Consideration of Acceptance of Deuce Club's White Mountain Road Waterline Crossing Replacement. Consideration of Approval Amendment Number One in our government agreement with the US Department of Transportation. Consideration of Approval of Sublease Agreement Between Zero and Zero Investments LLC. Consideration of Acceptance of Grant Fundings from, from the Network of the National Library of Medicine. Considerations of Amendment Sholo Council Meetings. Before I ask for a motion, ask City Clerk to read Item D, if you don't mind, Public Safety Communication Week.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Proclamation, City of Sholo Office of Mayor and City Council, whereas thousands of dedicated public safety telecommunications personnel daily serve the citizens of the United States and our community by answering their telephone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services and dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas the critical functions performed by these professional telecommunications also include those related to other government divisions, providing public safety telecommunications services, and whereas professional public safety telecommunications work to improve the emergency response capabilities of these communication systems through their leadership and participation in training programs and other activities provided by professional organizations and learning institutions. And whereas America's public safety telecommunications daily serve the public in countless ways without recognition by the beneficiaries of their services, now therefore, John Leach, Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the Sholo City Council, does hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through 17th, 2021, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Sholo, and encourages all citizens and public safety personnel to join in honoring and recognizing the safety, the public safety telecommunications of the Sholo Police Department and throughout the nation, and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of their citizens.
Thank you very much. That sounds a lot better the way you did it than I did, for sure. Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate that. Before we entertain a motion, like Mr. Hamsaw, come up and explain Item F for us, if you don't mind. Is this a shocker to you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe it was last fall, I don't know if I brought the paperwork or not, we went to an agreement with ADOT to adjust our utilities when they mail and overlay the roadway. We were supposed to bear the cost of that, that work. It came to about $108,000. We entered that agreement, paid our money. Behind the scenes, and they call, we've been watching projects happen this spring. I saw some project savings and some other unallocated money, and we kind of asked the group if they would put it towards our area of the, of the region. And they allowed us to take $108,000 of NACO federal money to pay for the utility adjustments instead of the city of Sholo money.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work doing that.
Yeah.
That's, that's awesome. I just, I thought he needed to read that to let everybody know in case he didn't read the details. Thanks, Shane. Appreciate that very much.
You bet. Thanks, Shane.
Thank you.
All righty, now I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar. Motion by the Vice Mayor?
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Got a motion in a second? Somewhere? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passed. On to new business, Consideration of Appointment, Plan, and Zoning Community Members. As, as you guys can see, we have an amendment to that. So I guess instead of voting, since there's three, we're, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I take a motion to approve Zachary Carlo, Douglas Roberts, and Jared Lewis as a Sholo zoning commission for the term expiring in March 2025.
I got a motion. I need a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is Consideration of Appointment of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Members. Just one quick comment on this one before we move. I'd, I'd like to see if we just move this to the next meeting, if you don't mind. We're not in no big hurry. I would just like all of us here, I, I know one of them might have to sustain from voting, so it leaves us short again. So if you guys are all in favor, or not in favor, but kind of in favor, I'd like to move it to the next meeting, if you don't mind. Anybody?
Need a motion to move that?
No. Just move it.
Do we need to move to table it?
Yeah, we'll need to move to table it.
Yeah.
You've done it both ways, but you can move to continue it to next meeting?
Well, that way we don't need a motion. If somebody wants to, just because we won't need. We can just continue to the next meeting, correct?
Usually do that.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to move it to the next meeting. All moved. Got a motion in a second? Again, all those in favor? Same sign, those opposed. I asked that question earlier, and I just told I didn't need it. That's okay. Throw me under the bus. Next item on the agenda is Consideration of Appointment of Board of Adjustment Members. And same thing, we have, what do we have, three? Two? Two, two applies, so I'll just entertain a motion.
Can we make that motion? I move to appoint John Jarrett and John Hannah to the Sholo Board of Adjustment for terms ending March 2025.
Got a motion in a second? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. All righty, Item D, Consideration of Award of Construction Contract for Citywide Roadway Improvement Project. City of Sholo Project Number R1721, Mr. Hamsaw.
Good evening, Mayor. City's fiscal year 2021 capital improvement program budget includes $48,000 for roadway improvement project labeled Sixth Street, about $80,000 for roadway improvement project labeled 16th Ave, and $180,000 for roadway project labeled Hill Press Subdivision, and an additional $165,000 for roadway project labeled 14th Loop Subdivision. These four projects' scope all consist of pulverizing the existing aging asphalt roadway and installing a new three-inch asphalt overlay on top. Scope of the work also includes installing driveway transitions, establishing roadside ditches and shoulders, and adjusting utilities to final asphalt grade. In an effort to increase the economy of scale and reduce redundant costs, the four projects have been grouped together into one for construction. Project was designed by city staff. Project had a construction estimate of $587,000. Project was bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Hatch construction and paving at $410,280. PAP LLC at $524,255. Sunland Asphalt at $537,770. McCole Construction at $558,965. Cactus Asphalt at $605,132.50. Perkins Cinders at $632,287.40. And Surface Contracting at $636,255. Staff recommends award of the construction contract for the Citywide Roadway Improvement Project, City of Sholo Project R1721, to hatch construction and pave and incorporate in that amount not to exceed that $410,280. The bid tabulation and the breakdown is attached. I'm available for any questions.
I got a quick comment, I guess. I'm kind of shocked that we can get all that done for that price. I hope it keeps going that way, because it just amazes me that that seems like a lot of roadway for that kind of price.
It, it was a good aggressive bid. We met with the contractor right after we opened them, and he's, he's ready to go.
Wow, it's exciting. Any questions or comments?
I probably know the answer to this, but, I mean, it's not like a 30,000, you know, difference. It's like a 200 and 30,000 difference between these bids.
Yes. A lot, a lot of times you'll see Hatch, for example, is, has the ability to make his own material, saves some, a lot of Austin doing that. He provides, he makes his own asphalt. Some other things, he's very local. He's right here in town. A majority of these are, besides two, are out of town, so they have to move in to do the work, so. There's a lot of variables depending on whatever work they have going on at the time, things like that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to award the construction contract for the Citywide Roadway Improvement Project, City of Sholo Project Number R1721, to hatch construction paving incorporated in an amount not to exceed $410,280.
I'll second it.
Got a motion? I got a second? All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Shane.
All righty, next item on the agenda is Consideration of Approval for Professional Service Contract with Sports Facility Advisory LLC. Mr. North.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Sports Facilities Advisory was commissioned in 2019 to help the City of Sholo establish a vision and conduct market research on a combined sports events and convention facility in Sholo. That first study was followed by a second study in 2020 to vet the facility concept for financial and market feasibility. Sports Facilities Advisory concluded that a facility in Sholo could attract visitors and spending, have a significant economic and social impact on the region, and also achieve operational sustainability. Sports Facilities Advisory is recommending conduct, us to conduct the third study, third and final study, actually, to take a deeper dive into the project to include, number one, identifying ways to fund the facility and potential funding sources. Number two, assessing the proposed site and the surrounding areas for development. Number three, create site and floor plans. Number four, creating a project pitch deck to help engage partners in the project. Number four, engaging partners, funding sources, and community champions to generate project momentum. Number five, assessing the likelihood of funding the project, and then finally establishing a plan to move forward on the project, if the study justifies doing that. This study will be conducted, or actually completed, in about 90 days at a cost not to exceed $75,000, $60,000 for the study itself, and up to an additional $15,000 for conceptual drawings and travel. Staff is recommending approval of a professional services contract with Sports Facilities Advisory to conduct this third and final planning study on the feasibility of a combined sports events and convention facility. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Has anybody got any questions? I know we just had a study session.
I do, and just for clarification, the $75,000 that they're asking for, for the study, is that included in the $27 million in that initial budget that we saw? Or is that over and above that?
Yes, they're, they're telling us that if we go forward with the project, it would be actually included as part of the overall project cost.
I'm excited about the conceptual drawing. Go ahead.
When we do the drawing, is there any way we could show that optional field like that?
Sure, that's a possibility as we get into this. The first phase is really concentrating on the, the facility itself, but we could look at subsequent phases as well as part of that process.
Yeah, I know, we kind of had a few concerns about the size of meeting rooms and stuff. and stuff like that. We can definitely change all that. At least we get a drawing, something to look at. I don't think you can get partners without it. So we're kind of like, I think, the city manager's go or no-go. I mean, this is, we really need this phase to see if it's even possible because I don't think anybody up here wants to do something like this without a lot of partners. So this is going to kind of tell us if we can do it or not because I can't see us, I don't think anybody up here is going to put this city in debt for this kind of money. So this phase is pretty important to decide whether it's going to work or not.
Yeah, we will know following this phase whether it's doable or not.
Right. City manager.
I guess as we're talking about this and we're going to people and talking, that's why I thought fields kind of need to be part of that saying, hey, look, this is the picture, this is what we're looking at. We don't want to show the whole plan of it, not just, hey, this is this part, this part, we're going to draw a plan of it. I want to see what it's going to look like with the field.
I'll just say, we already have a conceptual of the entire possible property with some fields showing on it.
It just doesn't have the detail of the building, but it has a bigger picture, as you say.
Is that possible, Mr. Mooters, to have that included? I think what Mr. Adams, Councilman Adams is asking is, if we come back with a conceptual and it says, this is what we can do for X amount, and then it says, here are the fields, and they would be included, and that would add on an additional amount? Like, so the totality of the project would be able to be done with this amount? Is that going to be, is that going to be possible in this phase?
Under the proposal, it's for the structure, the building structure itself. We can include that. We can get, I mean, Ironside Development has already developed that conceptual plan.
For the fields?
For the fields.
Okay.
And if we add it at this time, you're adding for an amendment to that contract. And I think we can accomplish that ourselves.
Okay, and that can be included in 90 days so that we're looking at the total picture?
We can do that.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Mooters.
And I'd like a clarification too, whether it's meeting rooms versus convention or event center.
That'll all come with the conceptual plan of how it's laid out.
And that's why, that's why I think it's pretty important. That way we can look at it and go, you know what? We need this to be a little bit bigger, or this, we don't need these. Or, because I think the first plan that we seen, I think we've all seen it, they had rooms for doctors and lawyers, not lawyers, but they had little rooms for medical. And I'm not sure if every one of them had to be in there. I don't know if they require it, but.
No, the idea of the facility was, it was to be multipurpose.
Right.
So the meeting rooms and all of that was included in it.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons they look at what partners can be involved, see what they need to put in the building.
That's true. And without that drawing, I don't think you'll have any. Any other comments or questions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve a professional service contract with Sports Facilities Advisory LLC to conduct a funding and partnership feasibility study for a proposed sports events center, convention facility in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
I'll second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you, Steve, for all you guys' hard work and your whole committee. And I know at the last meeting, I kind of made a comment about who runs it when it opened, but I didn't realize. I know when you guys were in the talkings, that was part of the talking. I didn't realize that that money was part of them running it. So I kind of felt kind of weird that I asked that question, but I wasn't sure yet, so. All right, where are we at here?
Summary.
Summary of current events. Down here first? Anything?
I just want to chime in about the fire condition that we're facing. I was driving yesterday afternoon and I saw quite a column of smoke coming. And I believe it was pinpointed somewhere north, I'm sorry, west of Sibiqui. So that really opened my eyes. I started thinking about, well, I need to start putting in boxes and getting organized just in case. I think that's something that's on my mind.
And I believe that was an abandoned campfire. Was that one of them that, well, she's already gone, but I think that was an abandoned campfire even. Mr. Adams? Are you good? I'm going to bring up our barbecue event that's coming up. Let's see, April 30th and Saturday, May 1st. Going to be pretty exciting. We're going to have a state contest on Friday night. We're going to have live music. Saturday, we're going to have a kids queue, which we're going to give kids of any ages. Well, no, I shouldn't say any, it's seven to 15, I believe, that comes out. They can cook a couple pork chops, it's provided to them, it's free. And we'll have awards for all the kids. It's, they cook on anything from gas, charcoal, whatever they'd like to do. And we're going to start that Saturday at 2:00. And that'll be right after the barbecue contest. And then we'll have awards Saturday, but it's pretty exciting. I'm really excited about the kids queue because we went to one here. I keep saying last year, we didn't have it last year. So the year before that, whenever that was, 2019, me and my wife went to a barbecue contest to promote ours. And they had a kids queue. And it's really cool to watch these kids cook. And literally, the parents are not involved. All they can do is light grill. And we hand, they pick out a couple pork chops and we go, okay, cook it. Got to have them turned in by, I think I turned in times like at 2:30. So they're pretty quick cook it, cook. But it's pretty exciting. I'm pretty excited about the new promoter we have this year for our barbecue contest, Mike Reiman with AZ Barbecue. We've got, I think he told me, there are 26 or 27 teams for the early bird. So we're about a month out, so pretty excited to start moving forward, that's for sure. Councilor Clark?
I don't have anything, thanks.
Councilor Wilson?
I know that tonight you proclaimed Public Safety Telecommunications Week, Telecommunicators Week. But I just wanted to say thank you to our law enforcement and our first responders for the job that they do.
Thank you. City manager.
Just a few things. In public works projects, next week, the city's contractor will begin construction on 11th Avenue Waterline. That's a replacement from Owens near the Aquatic Center going north to West McNeil. And then, and that should be completed in about 60 days. There's quite a few construction projects going around. I'm just going to mention a couple more here. Construction is scheduled the first week of May on 8th Avenue and Huning Waterline Project. And then Arizona Department of Transportation is planning to award the Dusa Clubs and White Mountain Road Mill and Overlay Projects at the April 16th State Transportation Board Meeting. That'll be an extensive project with a lot of concrete work and milling overlay of both Dusa Clubs and White Mountain Road. And the low bidder actually has low bid on both jobs, so it should be the same bidder and hopefully they'll coordinate on some of the traffic issues we're going to have. And again, we thank people for their patience as we, as those improvements are made. On Saturday, or on Saturday, April 24th is our MLK Day of Service, when volunteers go out and do a community project. And this year, due to COVID-19, we will assign smaller groups to work in projects in the community. Maybe family groups or small groups. And then we'll meet at 9:00 at City Hall. Wear your closed-toe shoes and bring gloves and a hat. And if you want more information on those projects for Day of Service, 532-4014. And then just to mention, as mentioned earlier, but there will be a ribbon cutting at the Adams Cabin that was relocated over to the city property on April 17th at 11:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody need seconds? Alright, scheduling meetings.
Just a reminder, on April 15th, here in the council chambers, we'll have a budget town hall. And then we'll start going over the department budgets immediately following with the council. April 15th at 6:00 PM. 6:00 AM, we may finish that day.
Oh, we're finishing.
What's over there?
Definitely. All right, is there any other business for the council? Next item on the agenda is executive session. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. Got a motion? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed? We'll now go into executive session.